...to give an opening statement. And after that, we will go full-on Q and A. So, we are going to go alphabetically. Mr. Doug Allen, you are up first.
My name's Doug Allen. I moved here with my family in 1972, and I bought my house on Main Street in 1983. I got married, had two, raised two sons, who moved out. I never really wanted to get involved with town government, but it seemed to have to be or something in my own mind. I believe that we are spending too much money too quickly. I believe we own too much property that we do not maintain correctly. We need somebody that has a different point of view, who's not afraid to say things that people don't like. I'm going to guarantee you, if I get elected, that I am going to propose something that every one of you won't like one thing or another. They may like 80%, but you, there's something in there you're not going to like. I think something needs to be drastically done to lower our tax bills. That's about it for me. I don't have much to say. I'll answer your questions.
All right. Carrie Ames.
Hi there. I'm Carrie Ames. I moved to Sandwich as a junior in high school and never left. I am married. I have two children. We, I started my quest to serve town back in 2003, when I tried to run for selectman the first time with absolutely no experience. And then I had children and got a little busy. I started with the PTA, and then the Respect for Human Differences, and then on to the school committee for seven years, where I've served until two weeks from now. And I feel like the school committee is a natural progression to selectmen. I've learned on the school committee some things, and there's still more for me to learn.
And Patrick Ellis.
Hi, Patrick Ellis. I'd like to say I haven't lived here in all my life yet. It's just a family thing. My father always told us, you know, you didn't, these people who moved here, they're a lot brighter than you are. They chose to live here. And so, we were just born here. I've served the town nearly my whole adult life, either as an elected official, as a staff member. I was superintendent of public works. And as a volunteer, I volunteered the Boat Parade, my wife and I, for the last almost 30 years. It's just an event that we love. I've spent two different terms on the board. The first one was to get this room renovated. I did the town's first PowerPoint presentation at town meeting in 1999. The article failed. Even the other four select board members didn't vote for it. But I convinced Frank Panorphi, and Frank carried the ball. We got on board with it, and this is the result of it. And it's something I'm most proud of, and I'm very proud of the achievements I've made as a board member.
Charlie Holden.
Good evening. I am Charlie Holden. I am a current incumbent on the select board. I came up here by way of the Finance Committee, which was excellent experience. I think that the board has accomplished a lot, and we'd like to keep the ball rolling. Thank you for your time and your thoughts.
So, let me start with the first question. This is for all of you. How would you describe a highly functioning Board of Selectmen? And how will you work to help the board meet that ideal? Highly functioning.
I'll say something. I would like to bring ideas that you need to he, that you need to hear. I mean, and then have a discussion about it. For people to realize is you have to bring up difficult thoughts, but you still have to convince two other people on the board to go on your side. So, just because I have something that people don't like, I still need to convince two other people. I believe I'm 100% different from everybody on the board and everybody that's running now. I've always been taught, you have so much money, you do what you can with it. I realize you do have to borrow money, and there's things that we do need in town, but it doesn't have to be a Taj Mahal. It doesn't have to be exorbitant. You can have a nice room that's painted. You don't need to do all these extra expenses. Just look at the one down where we bought the bank. We spend too much money on things that we don't, we need the actual thing, but we don't need to have such an extravagant building or whatever. And we do not maintain things. So, I would try to bring up things on a regular basis about, this needs to get painted. This needs to get done. You can look at the front of this building right here. Is there any ideas of who's going to paint it or who's going to clean it? I'm sure it's not, no one's thinking about that until it starts peeling, and then they're going to go, well, we need this money to fix it now, when you could have looked at it three years earlier and done something about it. But that's not the way this town thinks at this moment. They just think new. They love new things, and I love old things, I guess.
So, again, the question. How would you define a highly functioning board? And what will you do?
A highly functioning board will be able to talk these things through, and then the points will come across. Now, I hope to bring these things across. Now, I'm not saying it's going to work. You know, if there's 4 against me, there's not. I just want to bring things out that people can hear other sides. And a functioning board has to have differences at all times, because you can't all come in with the same answer and say, yeah, that's a great idea. It's a great idea. You need somebody to come out and say, look, that's not a good idea. We can do this. And that's how it functions. A board that votes 5-0, to me, isn't a functioning board. Sometimes it is. Don't get me wrong. I mean, there's some things that you have to do, and that's it. But most things, there's got to be a different set of an opinion, and it shouldn't come out 5-0. You should have 4-1, 3-2. Doesn't have to be my way, but it has to be done.
Okay. Thank you. And Patrick, yeah?
Well, I think over time, we've had years and years of highly functioning Boards of Selectmen. And my reason for that is because in almost every position, particularly in local government, you're handed a list of issues that you need to resolve, that you don't often have power over. So, for example, you might have a building that really needs to be painted, but if a child shows up at our school, we have to educate them. So, for example, Sandwich went multiple decades where our only paramount spending for capital was constructing schools. So, the board, a highly functioning board, has to deal with the facts that are in front of them, and then the necessity of doing those in a timely manner. Now, there was a time when the town didn't even have a building maintenance department. We now have a highly functional building maintenance department that's done a really good job. And we've worked our way through a lot of our buildings and have, have resolved a lot of problems. But to me, a highly functioning board has to deal with the facts.
Carrie?
So, for those that know me, I tend to be the dissenting voice on the school committee. I tend to be the one that challenges the superintendent or other board members. But what we've always done is it's always been respectful. I've had differences of opinion with Finance Committee members, Board of Selectmen, School Committee members, but it's always cordial and it's always with respect of their own opinion. I might be trying to convince you that I'm right, but at the end of the day, I'm willing to agree to disagree and vote the way I feel I should vote. And afterwards, it's like that disagreement didn't happen. You know, we, it's always walking away with the respect of the other person, which is very important.
Charlie?
I think we need to have vision. We have to have respect for one another. We need to have goals. We need to communicate these issues between ourselves, and more importantly, among the community.
You know, the question is born out of the fact that there were two meetings that were held in this room recently, which became pretty loud, pretty loud. Any comments on that?
Carrie?
So, not only the two meetings, but with the whole back-to-school with COVID, we've had a lot of energized meetings at the school committee level. You have to, in the case of here, or whatever committee you're serving on, you have to make sure that, number one, you're speaking to the issue that's at hand, but also, number two, that you might be making a decision that someone doesn't like, but they have to understand why. And I think if you can convince them why you're making your decision, then they can say, it dials down the temperature in the room, so to speak, and it also allows that back and forth that's needed when it's needed. And I think some of the difficulties of open meeting law comes from public forum, right? Because you can't have that back and forth, which sometimes leads the public feeling like that they're not being heard because they can't get the feedback.
Those pesky, roboach rules of order. Any other comment on that? Yep, Charlie?
I think we have to communicate a knowledge of what the incident was about, cure any misunderstandings that had apparently taken place, and move on with our business.
Okay. Yep, Patrick?
Being a chairman of a committee is very difficult. Controlling people's emotions during a meeting is a very difficult thing, and I think that's when the chairman actually has to be more calm, instead of less calm, and don't follow that kind of emotion.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah. Boy, she is enjoying the spotlight tonight. State your name. We don't know who you are.
Christine Brown, 18 Grandwood Drive. I'll ask the question because it was asked of me, and I think it's an important one. Do you, and this is for everyone, do you believe that Sandwich has a racism problem? And what role do you feel diversity, equity, inclusion has on a select board?
Raise your hand if you think there's a problem.
I think it's nuanced. I think it's nuanced, because I think sometimes diversity gets down to race, where diversity is economic. It's your family home. It's gay, lesbian, transgender. Diversity is more than just race. So, I think that Sandwich as a whole is a very welcoming community. I don't think that we are a racist town. I wouldn't live in a racist town. I believe that we are hitting this national dialogue with honesty and with having a good, calm discussion about it. I think also, and maybe it's just looking back where we've, where we were, and I go back to in the 80s, if I brought home a black boy, my grandmother would have had a stroke. If my daughter brings home a female Asian woman as her life partner, we're going to say, hi, how are you? I'm Carrie. So, I think we've, I think that we need to give credit that we have moved further in this discussion, but it's not solved. And I think when you look at the Civil Rights Act and on to the fact that civil rights was there before, you know, women's equal pay. So, we are a country that's growing. We are a town that's growing. So, I won't say that Sandwich is a racist town. I would not say that at all. I would just say that we are a town that is having a really difficult local discussion about how we can improve. And I think that as long as we continue to improve, we'll be making headway.
So, nuances considered, I just want to go back to the question. And I did ask, and I didn't see any hands up. Do we have a racial issue in this community? Yes to raise your hand.
You asking everybody this question?
I'm asking everybody.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Carrie says no.
I would say that there would have to be issues. I'm sorry. I would say that there would have to be issues of racism in a community of 22,000 people. That no one, no, there would be no chance that you could have that kind of interaction that there wouldn't be. But I haven't seen it as a board member in two terms on the board, and it hasn't been an issue that has either been brought to us or that we've had to deal with.
Doug?
Having gone to school here and grown up here, I'm saying no. Like you say, there's always, any town you go, there's going to be issues. And what it is, if you want to go back to the last issue, the big issue we've had in town here, if the person hadn't been arrested for kicking him in the head, kicking him in his body with a shot foot and get a felony charged against him, half of, you wouldn't even have heard about it. It would have kept in the school system. But by him getting charged with a felony, it changed the whole look of the whole situation. There's always fights. I mean, there's fights between white and white everywhere. Does that mean that it's a racist thing, because maybe this guy's from east Sandwich and this guy's from south Sandwich? I mean, no. These things happen. People have different opinions. Everybody doesn't say the right thing. And we, in my opinion, we've become so politically correct on certain issues that common sense is going out the window. Now, I'm not saying I wasn't there. I don't know, he said, she said, I haven't heard anybody back anything up. All I said, heard was that somebody said this to somebody and a fight resulted. So, I'm just going to read in the paper. That's all I get is what's written in the enterprise and what's written in the papers. So, I'm saying this town is not a racist town. No.
Charlie?
Okay. Well, obviously, we have a, a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, because we perceive that there is an issue out there that needs to be addressed. You're talking about a current Board of Selectmen here, Select Board, that signed the proclamation that, that we are diverse and, and we don't tolerate discrimination. I like to think that, that we don't just say it, we mean it, and that we, we relate that to the community.
Okay. Question over here.
Hi, I'm Judith Holt. I live on Summer Street in Sandwich. Over $50 million has been allocated and given out in grants to different towns in Massachusetts for repair and care and maintenance of energy systems through the Green Communities Designation Act. Sandwich has done nothing with this. It was voted positively in town meeting in 2019 to look at this, moving toward this act, where we could get grants from the state for these things. And it was also voted positively that the town should have an energy committee. Cape Cod is ground zero for climate change, and yet the town of Sandwich is doing nothing about it. What would you do?
Someone jump first.
Yeah, I would support the Green Communities Act. I think it's important. It's where, there's about 97% of the communities in Massachusetts have either taken advantage of it or belong, and it's something that's really appropriate. This building's chillers were acquired through a similar program through the Cape Light Compact. So, we have, have experience, right, in this very building with our HVAC system and that kind of grant.
Okay. Charlie?
I agree, Pat. I think we should sign on to green and not just to take advantage of, of grants, but to implement differences that will affect the climate in a positive way.
Doug?
I'll agree with the two of them about taking the money for the grants. I'm not sure we should sign on to anything else, other than using what we can to maybe do the heating systems or whatever, whatever you can use it for. Any grant you can get, it's a grant. You know, that's, don't ask, don't sign on to too much. Just take what you can take. Don't sign on for a big, long thing that, in the state of Massachusetts, things don't always work out long-term. You know, if they offer you something, well, 10 years down the road, you're going to be able to get out. You know, the perfect example to me and that one is this CPA fund, where we got involved with that, where they promised us a certain percentage, they'll, they'll match our money, they'll match our money. When we had the land bank and we switched over, and then they stopped giving us money, and then the CPA fund turned to me, as a, as a matter of fact, that it's a slush fund, where we, the town spends money that they're not going to get pushed through on other things. It's, it's just a way of doing things that I don't agree with. Go ahead. I know she's going to say.
Carrie?
I honestly would need to learn more about it before I could comment.
Okay. Go ahead. Stand up.
Margot Critchfield again, through Boardwalk Road. I just want to follow up on Christine's question and very humbly suggest that if anyone in this room, including the four of you, does not think that Sandwich has an issue with racism, I strongly urge you to create some kind of a safe space where you can invite black and brown bodies from Sandwich to come in and tell you their stories, because it will make either your hair stand up on end or make you weep. And Sandwich has a reputation on the Cape as being the most racist town on the Cape. Deserved or not, who's to say? But I can tell you that there is definitely a problem with racism in Sandwich. And if you're not aware of that, shame on you. You need to be talking to the black and brown residents of this town and hearing about their experience with adults, not just in the schools.
Yep, Doug?
I have a question about that. If, if the Cape thinks we're the most racist town, are you getting these comments from these meetings that you're going to? Or are you getting this from the general public, that we're the most racist town?
Next question.
Actually, it's not a question. I just wanted to correct, Doug. I'm the chair of the CPC, and we have never not got matching funds. We've got matching funds every year that we have been involved in. We've switched from the land bank to the CPC, and in fact, 1% of those are skimmed off and devoted to our town's wastewater plant.
Wastewater, no.
If we didn't have that plan in place, we might be sued by the environmental law firm that forced Buzzards Bay to install a septic treatment plant. So, we get, in fact, we're getting bigger and better matching amounts right now than probably we've ever gotten. And in my opinion, you can call it a slush fund, but if you look back on the financial circumstances that we have suffered since the rapid growth that we went through, especially with the additional schoolchildren that came to town, and as Patrick alluded to, that, you know, the only real improvements in construction we could undertake was schools, CPC has really provided the only form of, of lifestyle, you know, improvements that we have. I mean, it's really been the only source of money that's enabled us to have some of these, you know, this, this building, for example, in the state that it's in, some, we've bought conservation lands, we've built recreational facilities, the skateboard park, I'd never, I, I voted and went along with, you know, for the sake of, you know, having, having consensus, but I never even, to be honest with you, I didn't really think that that would pass a town meeting. And it passed with flying colors, and it is incredibly well-used today. It's a wonderful facility for kids.
Well, here's my, it, okay.
I think it provides us with an awful lot of quality of life.
I'm not saying all the money's used as a slush fund. What, okay, how about the $1.3 million that we gave to the people that bought the school for $1 million? Now, no, no, I, I was totally against the thing to begin with. Now, so, if that's not a slush fund...
It's, again, back to the facts, because there's a housing element to the CPC funding. So, it was completely appropriate that we would do that for an elderly housing, senior housing project in our community. It was the intent of the law.
That was, that was a law that changed. Okay, okay.
Those are the facts.
At a personal time, instead of going back and forth if you want.
Any other questions? Thank you. Stand up.
I'm Laura Wing, 60th Salt Marsh Road. I'd like to know how familiar you are with the beach re-nourishment issues in this town, especially related to the Section 111 study that's been, a solution has been proposed to the town of the Army Corps of Engineers. How familiar are you with that solution? And if you are, if you agree with it, and is it the best solution for this town in re-nourishing our beaches?
Who wants to take that one? Charlie?
As a select board member, I'm familiar with the 111 study. I think that we should accept whatever's offered to us and then come back at them and, well, what are you going to do for us next time? Because your jetty has imposed upon our beaches a lot of destruction over the last decades, and they have to have an ongoing plan. It can't be a one-shot deal. And as a member of the board, as a, a member of trustees of Sandwich Beaches, I like to think that I'm familiar with the, with the issues, and it's my intention to move forward with it.
Carrie?
So, I haven't read the 111 study, so I can't comment on the study itself. What I can comment on is for, there can't be any deniability that the Corps of Engineers has impacted Sandwich beaches in our marshes, and they need to be held accountable for that.
I first served on a committee asked by the Select Board to serve in 1983. It was a beach restoration committee meeting, a committee. The report is as accurate today as it was when we published it at the end of that. And this was when the first houses along Salt Marsh Road were being put on piles. And Don Eldridge, our committee chairman's, was the first house to be put on piles. I 100% agree that it's the Army Corps' fault, the extension of the jetty. It's been obvious. And I completely support us pursuing the 111 study. And I also believe that if you look at the period of time from 1983 until now, and think about the problem we have with this, is because if you look at the political climate from 1983 till now, and look at how many presidents we had, we had Jerry Studs as the chairman of the Natural Resources Committee in Washington, we had Kennedy, we had Obama, we have had Elizabeth Warren, we've had Dems, and we have had Republicans, and we've never gotten 100% universal political support for this. It's the lacking part of it. I think if I were to bring anything to the board, I would bring that, that we really need to step up our game with the Pauls, because this is something that gets done only through political juice. The science never drives the solution.
Doug, do you want to comment before we take another question?
I'll give a quick comment on that one. I'm for, for getting the money. I've had a, we had a beach cottage since 1972 on Spring Hill Beach, so I was able to watch it. I can remember when this first came up and the town actually, there was a problem that some people in town didn't remember, actually extending the jetty, some people in the town government. And I remember as a kid, watching them pick up the rocks in the parking lot and doing it. And then we went on to do study after study about what was going on, which was costing us money. And I said back then, when I had an opinion about everything, that we should just be going after the Army Corps of Engineers in the beginning, which they wasted 20-something years and untums amount of money doing studies that are no good anymore. They were, they were no good. After a certain amount of time, they lost their authenticity, or whatever you want to call it, and you had to do another study. So, I'm for making the federal government pay 100% and to maintain it. To get a one-time deal is just going to give you X amount of years. If it's not full-time, they've done it in Virginia Beach, they've done it all down the East Coast, there's a way to do it. Like Patrick says, it has to be political, and I don't think they'd listen to anybody from the town of Sandwich, so...
Okay. Question over here, please.
Similar topic. Steve Prendergast, Sedgwick Lane. I'm interested in your comments on the boardwalk, and where do we, where do we stand with that? And why didn't we repair it after the last big storm? And now we've got to spend, I think the number's $4 million, to put up a brand-new one, and we won't have one for a couple of years.
I'll, I'll start with that one. I'm for repairing the boardwalk. I am not for rebuilding the boardwalk. As far as I'm concerned, we have a building instruct, a building inspector. There's no reason why he can't go down there, maybe needs a town engineer, look at the pilings, which I believe is still good, and say, well, this is still structurally strong. Go to R.D. Williams, get some rough saw and lumber, put the stringers on, put the planks that taken apart back down on again, and maintain it. The reason it came off is when they put the stringers on last time, whoever inspected it, they weren't attached correctly. So, when the wave water came up, it picked the stringer, the whole thing up, and flopped right over. To build a new boardwalk, you can't predict what's going to be in 25. You might as well just, every six months, go down there, have one of our inspectors go down there and check it, see what needs to be done. Don't wait till something breaks. You have to have preventive maintenance to keep it there. You know, if you are interested in building a new boardwalk, what I would say to do is get somebody down there and drive some pilings in the ground next to the existing boardwalk and do piecemeal, and have the pilings there in case, that's what you have to do it eventually. Do it now, because it's going to take you forever to permit it, and just leave the pilings sitting in there, and then structure them across as you need them.
Carrie?
So, it's not 1980. We're not allowed to do that anymore.
What?
You can't just go down to Abisham and get parts and go fix the boardwalk anymore. It has to be compliant. It's not a historic. Unfortunately, in my mind, it's the historic boardwalk. However, when it was repaired, they did not follow certain guidelines, and therefore, the town is forced to make the boardwalk within compliance. That... That stretch of our land, I think, is probably one of the most surveyed boardwalks in America between the Woods Hole Group and everything else that we've done. I agree with you, preventative maintenance should have been done. That is something that this town is getting better at with their buildings, about doing preventative maintenance, rather than, oh, the thing, you know, the wolf blew and the thing blew down. But you have to make it ADA compliant. You have to make it with materials that are sustainable. You have to make it with, within code. You can't do what we did before.
So what you're saying then, you can't, you cannot repair the boardwalk whatsoever right now? There's no way you can do it. You have to go ADA to make a repair?
Yes.
I don't believe so. I could be 100% wrong, but if somebody puts, if a plank breaks...
I might not know about the 111 study. I know about ADA laws.
So if a plank breaks, to fix that plank, you've got to fix the whole boardwalk. Yes or no?
If it was a plank, that is different. You are doing the structural, replacing the structure.
Stringers. The structural, I believe the structural, the post going, I could be 100% wrong, but I'm just saying, in my mind, maybe I'm 100% wrong. I don't know. That's to be discussion. That's what we would do. In the Selectment, we'd discuss it. You tell me the facts, I tell you what I think is true, and that's what it's about.
Patrick, any thoughts on the question? Or Charlie?
Let's go back to town meeting in 2019, where town meeting voted to replace the boardwalk. And that's all we're doing. And in so doing, we're making it accessible to everyone in town. We're making an effort to make it safer in general, in total, to the extent that you can be, given the laws of nature. And Mr. Prendergast, Steve, I'm not arguing with you at all, but that's the first time I've heard a $4 million number. I haven't heard that at all.
I see that, I see it as two completely different things. If you wish to build a brand-new boardwalk and go through the process of designing a new, a brand-new structure, that structure has to be compliant with current laws. And that process is ongoing. But I also believe that we should have a boardwalk throughout that process. And that we had a boardwalk, and when, even when the Historic District voted to tear down the approval to take out the existing boardwalk, it still functioned as boardwalk that day, and the next day, and up until October's storm. And my issue is, just fix it, make it an operable boardwalk, which can be done. It's pressure-treated wood attached to pressure-treated pilings. So it's not rocket science, again. But I think that that issue doesn't have anything to do with rebuilding the boardwalk. We can fix what we have and then have a boardwalk until we decide and finalize design and funding for the boardwalk. The town administrator, the town manager in this room at the Finance Committee indicated to the Finance Committee and to us by virtue of an article in The Enterprise, that we do not have the money currently to repair the boardwalk at the current design and cost estimate. So like I said, we should just fix what we have so we have a functioning boardwalk until that time, and that's as simple as it gets.
Okay. Question back here.
Good evening. David Sampson, I have a question for Mr. Allen. So I watched your video on Sandwich Community Television, listened to your commentary this evening. I would say that you've almost prided yourself on not participating in local government for a long time. You haven't attended town meeting. I know that you haven't attended a selectman's meeting, at least not in the form of public forum. So a little bit of a two-part question. First, why is elected office the path for you to let your voice be heard? And the second question would be, you've said that you have a lot of ideas and messages that need to be heard and discussed, but you haven't been specific about what any of those ideas are. And as you relate some of your comments towards more discussion, like as we just talked about with the boardwalk, I know that the current board is selected, and as somebody who's spent hours of my life discussing that specific subject, I'd be curious if you took in any of the data that's already been put forward or deliberated amongst the current board when you make some of these comments and decisions about current state and where we need to go for the future.
Okay, that was a long question, so I'm going to probably ask you to repeat some of it. The first part was, why am I using this to vote, I mean, to run for selectmen to get my points across? Is because if you come into this room and you sit in front of the five selectmen and you say something to them, and you don't have 100 people behind you, they listen to you, they're not going to change their mind, they're not going to take, oh, that was a good idea. Their minds, in my opinion, are sort of made up about what they're talking about. And one person isn't going to sway them. If you had 100, if I had 100 people behind me that wanted to come into town meeting and we all said the same thing and yelled and screamed, well, then they would listen to it. So I, last time I went to a town, well, the last time I spoke at a town meeting was a long time ago. And that was about the police department. And I was young, and Chief Weedy got up and he started making a joke out of what I was talking about. And from that point on, I said, I'm never talking to town meeting again. And then the last town meeting I actually attended was back when they were trying to stop construction in town, which had to be 15, 20 years ago. Because to me, town meeting is getting to a point where a minority of the people are running the town. Because, and I'll give them credit, like I said in my interview, they show up, they put the time in, they get things passed. So when I first started going to town meeting in '73 when I was in high school, because they'd give us extra credit for going, there'd be 300 people at town meeting. There was 2,000 people in town. So things got passed there, and a majority, not a majority, but a great percentage of the people that cared about them were there. You go to a town meeting now, there's 250 people there on a good night. There's 22,000 people in town. So what's happening is, in my opinion, is town meeting is, I'm not going to call it a waste of time, but town meeting should be voted, they vote things on to get onto a ballot, where a majority of the town that actually shows up to vote on the ballot that don't, that doesn't show up at a town meeting, you can get a better perspective of what the actual town wants, not just special interests. Okay? That was that.
Let's see if we got another, state another question.
The other question was...
So the second question was...
The second question was about the boardwalk, right? Why am I saying something?
The second question was, you've indicated that you have ideas that need to be heard, you need to say things that people are afraid to say, but you haven't been specific about what any of those things are.
I'll give you a couple of those right now. The fire department wants $650,000 for override, or that exclusion for overtime. So I'd ask them exactly, well, what is that fireboat costing us? How much overtime are we putting into the fireboat? What do we need a fireboat for in the marina? We have the Coast Guard here. To me, that's a complete waste of money. It is. I mean, we have a tree truck that the town uses to put up lights and does the small jobs. My brother has two trees that are dead in front of his house that have been sitting there on town property for plus a year plus. But they're waiting to hire a tree truck guy to come in and take care of them. If we're not going to use the tree truck, what are we paying to maintain that? Why do we have that? We have things in this town because everybody likes to have things. Every department wants more, and they usually get it. And it's getting to the point now where I think they have too much, and we have to cut back on some things.
Any other questions?
I'll give you more if you want, but...
Got one over here.
Carl Johansson, concerned citizens, great town of Sandwich, Massachusetts. We have presently a board of selectmen that, in my opinion, is bar none since I've been in this town. And I like to say, in regards to this boardwalk, when folks start talking about the boardwalk, if I'm correct, irregardless of whether replacing it or repairing it, it still has to meet the requirements of ADH, the disabled. Just like we have certain requirements that we need for the handicap parking and disabled veterans and that type of thing, which this town of Sandwich is lacking. I'd like to hear, starting with Mr. Ellis, what his opinion is in regards to the handicap situation as far as parking goes, and his statement that he made about repairing, and where does he get the money from to make a repair on a particular situation that it has a specific requirement before you can even begin to think about it, which the previous, the present board of selectmen have already done. Thank you.
Well, the question was given to Patrick, so let's go with Patrick.
Of course, I've always supported accessibility. It's something that, in my career, and while I was the superintendent of Public Works, I built probably 20 miles of sidewalks in Sandwich that are part of that. And that's what we do. As far as things like a catastrophic repair of a physical facility owned by the town, the town has a reserve account, and the town has a stabilization account, always. Those are why we have those. When we have something like a storm come along that wiped out a critical feature in our town, that's why we have a reserve account. That's why we have a stabilization account. So we have a methodology to do that, whether it's the destruction of a road or a boardwalk. It doesn't matter. That's, that exists for that function.
Okay. Anyone else? Doug?
Okay, I'll say, I'm not good with dates, but in the last 10 years, on the boardwalk, going over the dunes, that was replaced. Now, according to your statement, since we're replacing that part of the boardwalk all new, we should replace the whole thing. Because you couldn't replace that because we're not bringing the rest up to code. That's all we're trying to do here, is bring this section up to code, not up to code to replace it. So if your law was true, we should never have been able to do that, right? But we did. But we can't put down, and I talk about the boardwalk, I've been building all my life part-time. I know, I've built houses, I've done a lot of work in carpentry, and I know what it takes to put a stringer down. And that's all those are, stringers and boards. And if the, and if the footings are solid and the crossbeam is still solid, that's all you need. And that's what we have a building inspector for, to go down there. We tell him to go down there, check it out, and come back to us. What I think, which believes me the whole other thing, that what's happened here is, I believe the selectmen run the town, and every department head works for the selectmen. The town manager works for the selectmen. So the selectmen should be telling them what to do. Well, I can't do it. Well, get it done. That's your job. If you don't like the job, go somewhere else. Because that's your job, is to work, what the selectmen tell you to do, you do it to the best of your abilities. If you can't do it, you can't do it. But if we give you a statement to do something, go down and do it. Don't tell me what you can and can't do. Just go do it.
Carrie?
So the selectmen, Bud answers to the selectmen. Those under Bud answer to Bud, not to the selectmen. We can never tell the police chief what to do. We can offer suggestions, we can hear reports, but we are there to oversight, not get into the weeds. So we can't go down to the DPW and say, we want you to fix, we want you to fix this road. That's not the road...
We tell Bud to do that. And then Bud comes back to us, and we tell Bud what to do.
I was just clarifying what you said.
Okay, sorry.
I was just, I was trying to clarify what you said.
I'll agree with what she says.
Anything else on the boardwalk question? Yep, Charlie?
We owe a responsibility to the community that allows everyone to use this iconic asset that the town has. And part of the rebuilding process is to make it accessible to everyone that we could possibly make it accessible to.
Carrie?
As far as the boardwalk, as someone whose child, just a few years ago, was in a wheelchair, that boardwalk was not handicap accessible. I'm very grateful she can walk the boardwalk now, but even with her limited mobility, it is unsafe for her. And I'm not saying just for my child, but I'm just saying as a personal example of someone with a disability, who has a disability. In the minute you use town funds to fix something, it has to be ADA compliant.
Okay. Let me ask you that. Charlie, you used the word asset. What is the greatest, in your opinion, what is the greatest asset that Sandwich has? And what would you do as a selectman to work to improve or preserve that asset?
Talking about a physical asset?
Yeah.
Okay. It's the greatest asset in town of the people. But after that, gosh, the roads are important. Have to be able to get around, have to be able to respond in an emergency basis, have to be able to get in and out of town. And as part of that asset, the beaches are a part of it as well, because the beaches need to be replenished in order to protect the town and the roads.
So when we talk about the roads as being that asset, what would you do as a selectman in, if this was your next term, to preserve or to improve the roads?
As a part of the DPW's proposed budget owing forward to '23, that there is a $650,000 amount of money that's being devoted towards maintenance of the roads. And that's a very important aspect of what we're trying to do.
Patrick?
Bar none, roads are the biggest capital asset that the town owns. It blows everything else away. And roads are like the part of a cell, you remember biology, where the endoplasmic reticulum, that's the part of the cell that connects it to everything else. Really one of the most important parts. That's what roads are. They're education, they're recreation, they're emergency vehicles, they're school buses, they're quality of life. And a bad road is something no one wants to live on, particularly for 20 years. And think about it, if you had a bad road for 20 years and the average person lives in Sandwich 12 and 1/2 years, there's the potential that you could move into a house on a lousy road, pay taxes for 12 and 1/2 straight years, and move out, and you have your moving van on the same bad road. We've already fixed this in Sandwich. We've got a good pavement management system. What the board needs to do to help the DPW is to, in my case, I happen to be a road expert. It happens to be what I do. It was the passion that developed in me. After I fell in love with trees, I went to the dark side and fell in love with asphalt. But we have the capacity to fix this in Sandwich, and it's really a matter of selection of the right processes to extend our pavement lives, and predominantly to ensure that everyone lives on a good road. And it's an attainable goal, but the role of the board is to get the money. Role of the board, think about it, the last year I was superintendent here, we had the best roads of any client of VHBR consultant, who's still our consultant today. And we passed, even with the best roads, in 1996, we passed a $3.5 million road bond. That was my kiss-off to Sandwich as I left for the private sector. I left the town in good hands, with a good roadway network and $3.5 million. And now our roadway network level is down in the 70s somewhere, it should be in the low 90s. But we also haven't sustained our funding for it. It's got to be in every day. The $650,000 to the DPW for roads, quite frankly, should be 6.5 million. But we'll get to that. But that's where the role of the board is, is to facilitate getting the funding to bring our roads up to a good standard.
Carrie, the greatest asset?
So our greatest asset, I don't think it's actually owned by the town. I think our greatest asset is our small business owners. Because our small business owners are so community-involved, they are giving back in towns in different ways. They bring tourism in, and Sandwich is not a tourist town, right? One of our biggest detriments is that we have, this is going to sound awful, we have a lot of year-round residents. We don't have taxpayers here that don't use our services. So without our small business owners bringing in that tourism, especially in the summer, I think a Sandwich Fest alone, one of my daughter's doctors from Boston actually came down to Sandwich Fest last summer, because, so that, and she came in, she stayed in bed and breakfast, and then she went to dinners here... And then she went to dinners here. And that is, I think, something that isn't highlight, I won't say it's not highlighted enough, but I don't think it's as respected as it may, as it should be. As far as a town-owned asset, I would say the stability of our administration staff. As someone who's been on the school committee through multiple renditions of administrative staff, the stability that we have in our management of this town, from our police chief to our fire chief, to our head of the DPW to our town manager, is probably our greatest asset because it sets us up for success. There's a reason why we have the rainy day fund. There's a reason why we have our good stabilization fund. And that's because we've had really great fiscal management that only came from stability.
And Doug, question for you.
I'm looking at the asset as a different way. I'm looking at the town beaches. It's something that brings people in, something that we can use. It's an asset to everybody. I think we should put more money into our town beaches. I think we should actually cut back on some of our money on our ponds. I think people come to Sandwich, to the Cape, because it's an ocean beach. It's not an area you go to freshwater beaches. I think another big asset to the town could be the cook property that we bought with 30 acres up there, whatever it is. If, I don't know if anybody's been to World's End in Hingham, where they've developed an area where the town could use it and you put plants, trees. It takes 50 years. You have to have some sort of vision to see it. Where you could use that and clean it with other funds from grants and plant that and something that the town itself, that everybody can use.
So on the beaches, what would you do as selectmen, which is the second part of the question, what would you do to protect, protect, preserve, you know?
I don't believe you, without sand from the core, you cannot protect. I mean, you're up to the weather, it is what it is. I was saddened when they tore down the comfort station on Town Neck Beach and when they tore down the little food shack, there would have been great assets to the beach. Now you have househouses down there. I've seen things built on sandy neck beach dunes that you need something on the beaches where people can use and enjoy the beach. Yes, there's only so much parking. I don't, I don't know. I don't think there's much you can do. I mean, other than try to bring back what we had at one time and enjoy to its fullest.
We proposed that.
Yeah. Patrick, were you going to say something?
Yeah, that was actually proposed by the board. While I was on the board, the last time, we proposed a major bathhouse and it didn't pass.
Okay. Last question. You're the lucky one.
My name is Meg Keegan. I live at 13 Joe J Lane. I'm on the Commission of Disabilities. If you have a question about the ADA, I can let you, give you some information on that. But my question is, if we don't re-elect Mr. Holden, how are you going to fill his shoes with his community involvement? And if you don't know how, the tremendous amount of involvement he has with the community, you should probably ask him so you can fill that.
Carrie?
Nobody can do what Charlie does. I'm sorry. You're a hero, Charlie. I'll be, I'll be honest. I, I work full-time. You're not going to see me during the day, during the workday, unless it's something that I can arrange. I have a pretty busy job. However, I'm always accessible. And I think I've put myself out there enough. And I know if I can be there, I am there. But I always have to balance that between having a child and having a full-time job. I think, again, no one can do what Charlie can do, to be honest.
Okay. I do think though, just to kind of wrap this up, but in the spirit of, you know, Charlie is everywhere. I think there are four Charlies, in fact. I'm, I'm just guessing. But that does speak to getting out from behind the table and being in the community, being present, rolling up your sleeves. How do you envision yourself doing that or being that type of, I'm going to, I'm going to show up, I'm going to do things? How would, how do you see yourself in that role? Down there? Okay, Patrick.
I think that when you, the more you know an individual person, the more you know what they do. But it doesn't mean that you know what everyone does. And so it's really incumbent upon you to find out what made the other people be able to do something. So for example, my wife and I, we sponsor the boat parade for the town on 4th of July. And we supply all the, all the strapping, all the lanterns, all the candles. But we didn't do it once. We've been doing it for 25 straight years. And that's, you're commenting and complimenting Charlie, and I would compliment him too. Because I know how hard it is to be a select board member and how hard, if you're going to be effective, you have to really work hard at it. So I would say it's, there are, Sandwich has been fortunate because we've had a lot of people like Charlie who've been willing to donate their time to the town in many ways. And whether that was as a volunteer or as a staff member or as an elected official.
Carrie?
So my first year on the school committee, I think I signed up for every subcommittee that had a role because I wanted to learn, right? And, but then as years passed, what you do is you find, you find your strengths and you find your weaknesses, right? So if I, I was weak on one subject, I wanted to be on that subcommittee so I could learn more, right? And if I was strong on this, on one aspect, I wanted to be on that, on the subcommittee for that reason. And I think so for me, I would find a balance between those two thoughts and where I could serve. Because I don't want to serve something and be ineffective, right? So I don't want to be on, I don't want to be meeting with people and I'm a detriment to them because I'm not adding anything to the conversation. So I think I would just be very strategic on where I could help the most and also where I could learn the most and balance those two facts.
I really don't know what Charlie does. I just met him tonight for the first time. Only thing I know about Charlie is what I read in the paper. So all I can say is, I'm not running against Charlie. I'm not running against these, I'm running for myself. I believe, I'm retired. I had been retired for nine years. Sailed for 34 years at Deep Sea as a merchant marine. I have put time into things. I've been running in the community garden down on Libby Street for 30 years now. It's just things that I, I do, if something interests me, if there's a situation that I believe needs to take, be taken care of, I'll do whatever I can. I don't, never, don't know what they do. I really don't. This is a first time thing for me. But I'm willing to work. I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to put my time in. I'm dedicated. I'm opinionated. And I usually get things done if I really put my mind to it. And I have a lot of things that I'd like to put my mind to and get done.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we have a race. Hey, one quick question for all of you. How many of you know who you're going to vote for? Okay. I'm going to say all but maybe two people. Interesting. Okay. Doug Allen, Carrie Ames, Patrick Ellis, Charlie Holden. Good luck. Thank you very much. And thank you all for being here.